I'm a host for the first time, so extra things are coming up. Sorry about that. I am officially calling the this regular meeting of the Collingswood Board of Education to order adequate notice of this meeting provided and advertised in all of the appropriate places. Roll call please. Anita, are you going to take roll call or?
Clinton Connor.
Present.
Roger Chu.
Here.
Matthew Craig.
Here.
Fiona Henry. Sarah Mello.
Here.
Syria Rivera.
Here.
Mary Severino.
Here.
Christine Sheridan Celia.
Here.
Bill Stouts.
Here.
Heidi Marie Wood.
Here.
Reagan Caden.
Here.
And Superintendent Fred McDowell.
Here.
And Beth Ann Coleman is absent.
And we thank Anita for stepping in for her. At this time, those that wish to stand, we are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Indivisible. Visible. With liberty and justice for all.
There is no executive session at this time, so we are moving to item three on the agenda, Committee of the Whole. Can I get a motion to enter Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
That's Bill Stouts and.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's Syria Rivera was the second. All in favor?
Hi.
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 So we wanted to take a little bit of time at the beginning of the meeting to ask Dr. McDowell to give us a bit of an update on the planning that is taking place for fall of 2021 and what will be going on through the summer and then what families, what and when families can expect to hear more about what's the fall of 2021 will look like.
Okay, so good evening to everyone who is here on the call. With regards to school reopening, all of the local school site community conversations have already taken place. Each school campus engaged in targeted and facilitated discussion related to the safe return to school in September with an emphasis on two core areas, one being health and safety and the second being teaching and learning. Each school community has currently submitted detailed recommendations and ideas for how to best facilitate that. Tomorrow, the school leadership teams will be meeting in order to calibrate and norm around the feedback that has been submitted. We will be focusing much of our discussion on what does, what do orientation activities look like for students upon return and what types of environments do we need to be prepping and planning for? The long-term goal and plan for the district is in early August to release our formal comprehensive school reopening plan with one-page pullouts that are unique and specific to each school campus. In addition, beginning in middle of August, we will be having school community forum at each school campus, which would be targeted Q and A, an opportunity to meet collectively with staff, with district leadership, with some of our healthcare professionals and community leaders in the areas of public health in order to answer any questions related to the safe return for September. Throughout the summer, we'll be working collectively once we receive official written guidance from the Department of Education as well as the CDC on the full scope of what we should be planning for. We do anticipate that formal guidance coming within the next several weeks. But much of our planning will be as originally planned, which are all of our facilities projects will be taking place throughout the summer while we are offering summer programming. E S Y will take place in July and our summer camps for elementary and secondary students will take place in August while we continue to prepare for the safe return to full-time in-person instruction for September. You're currently muted.
Could you, could you just elaborate a bit on what you, what guidance from the Department of Ed and the CDC that we're waiting on? And what sorts of decisions would need, will, will that information be used to factor in?
So very similar to the beginning of school this year, it was titled "The Road Back," which came from the Department of Education. There are certain guiding factors in terms of the continuity of learning, learning environments, and then what are some of the expectations related to the, to the DOE? One of those expectations will be implementation of the Start Strong Diagnostic Assessment, which will be used for students in grades four through 11 in order to identify gaps in students' education from the previous year to serve as a baseline for schools to be able to use to inform their collaborative planning and their instructional plan of personalization for each and every student for this upcoming school year. In addition, we will also, we also fully anticipate receiving targeted guidance from the CDC based on where we fall within the continuum of the pandemic. As a community, we've done a phenomenal job with the push to get vaccinated. We fully anticipate having the majority of our secondary students vaccinated by September. We surveyed our middle school and our high school students last week and based on the feedback, we estimate that three out of every four of our secondary students will be fully vaccinated, which will also contribute to resembling a sense of normalcy in September. But we are waiting for that final guidance to come from the CDC as well as the Department of Public Health.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions or anything that they'd like to bring up in regards to this topic? Um, I have a question about the Start Strong assessment that you just talked about. I'm just wondering, when, when will that be given? Did you say September or October? Do we have a timeframe for that?
The, the timeframe that they've given us is late September, early October. So that's kind of what we're, what we're planning for. We are actively in discussion looking at how do we appropriately assess our students K to three? Right now, we are slated as a school district to potentially pilot what, what's called the kindergarten readiness assessment or the K R A. But that accounts for kindergarten. We are still trying to seek the right balance with a norm reference assessment for grades one through three because Start Strong starts in fourth grade. But we anticipate late September, early October. What we're planning for currently is trying to strike the right balance in terms of relationship building, welcoming students back in a caring and nurturing environment specifically for many of our students who have not physically been on campus since March of 2020. We know that the first marking term needs to look and feel different. So really establishing those connections, re-establishing those relationships, re-establishing that, that love of learning while acclimating students to what could be a very challenging environment in September. So our focus is really around the whole child with assessment being interwoven. But we, we anticipate some of those soft skills and some of that relationship piece really being the priority.
Can I just ask, I just had another question about the Start Strong. Do, do we know like how quickly the teachers will get the information so that they can implement, you know, the, the things that they learn from the assessment? Do we know how quick the turnaround is for that or no?
We have not been given that information.
Okay, and is the plan to share that information with parents as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. McDowell, with, with that, that's the assessment that we have to give since we didn't do Praxis in the spring. Or not, it's not Praxis, excuse me, the State Park test or state test, correct?
Yes, yes.
Will this, will this one be aligned with next spring with that test? Kind of the Mary's question, will like teachers be able to use what they found in this one to help inform and prepare for the spring assessment?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's the purpose of the assessment. So the state struck the right, struck a balance with a qualifying assessment to meet the federal guidelines in lieu of the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. So they are waiving and allowing this to serve as the assessment that qualifies from, from the federal standards. The purpose of this assessment is to help teachers plan based on the gaps that students present with at the beginning of the year. Whereas the assessments that students will take in, in the spring will be based on current grade level standards. The Start Strong is really identifying the previous year's standards so that teachers can actually fill in those gaps while still exposing students to grade level content for the current year.
Any other, I'm trying to look and see if anyone else is unmuted or wanted to, to say anything. If not, just as a quick summary, so, so families can be expecting communication from the district probably sometime in August to plan for the, the community forums at each school and, and things like that. And we'll have more guidance about, I guess, what, what kids can expect when they're coming back to school in, in the fall, right? That would be the timeline?
Well, I, I would, I would probably give parents a bit more advanced notice. We would like to put out notifications probably mid to late July so that families can plan. We know that this is going to be a, a time of a lot of moving parts and a lot of information. So we want to make sure that families have multiple opportunities to engage their school prior to September. But the reopening plan will be released publicly early August with a series of eight community forums at each of the campuses by early to mid-August.
Are you anticipating having any kind of a virtual one as well for those that either will be unable to attend or, or? Yeah, is there any virtual option or we don't know that?
Yes, what we're planning for, we, we don't want to exclude any of our families. We know that there are lots of life challenges. So our goal, even though the community forum will be in person, our goal is to have a virtual component for families who are unable to attend in person. They still have access to the information and are still able to ask and have questions answered.
Great. All right, if there isn't anything further, I'm going to ask for a motion to come out of Committee of the Whole.
Moved, Chris.
Second.
Everybody's joking about that. I think it was Clinton that said second. All in favor?
Who said first?
Hi.
Celia gave the motion. Clinton Connor seconded.
Thank you.
No problem. Moving on to, to future dates and miscellaneous information, just wanted to draw everyone's attention to our high school graduation is this Thursday at 6:30. And then our next official public board meeting is August 30th at 6:30. But there will be the community forums at each school to look for throughout August. Moving on to section five, we, 5.01 is the approval of the minutes from the May 22nd, 2021 board retreat and the May 25th, 2021 regular board meeting and the June 7th, 2021 executive board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of all of those meetings?
So moved, Sarah.
Sarah Mello and second.
Second, Matt Craig.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And then section 5.02 is the annual report from the School Business Administrator of all contracts that the Board of Education has gone out to bid for and awarded. So if anyone wanted to click on, they can see all of the list of the contracts that have been awarded. And I know all, most of them go out for bid with the exception of ones like the Camden County Ed Services Commission, which just works a little bit differently. But that is the, the list that, that Ms. Coleman needs to give to us every year. So that is what 5.02 is. Actually, before we get to, to section six, just because I want to not lose them if they are on the call, do we have any of our board student reps or are they, Dr. McDowell, do they not come to this meeting? Looking at names very quickly and I don't see any of them.
I would be pleasantly surprised if our student, if our student representatives were here.
Never mind, we're, we're good to go with, with section six, but I wanted to give them the chance if they were here. So moving on to section six, public comment. If you wish to make a statement, please type your name and address into the chat. When your name is called, unmute yourself to speak and please keep your comments to five minutes or less. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community, the community, excuse me, opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes so that we can take all of that is being said into consideration. And as we just talked about a few minutes ago, there will be opportunities to engage in dialogue with Dr. McDowell and board members later on this summer. So with that being said, if anyone wishes to make a public comment, please type your name in the chat. This is the awkward part of Zoom where I'll give it about 20 more seconds just in case someone is trying to type and then.
Miss Caden.
Yes.
Someone did Brooke DeRue. They, they commented to me directly, not in the public forum by mistake.
Okay, um, so. So if there's someone on the call.
Their name, yeah, their name is Dylan DD52403.
I see that she is unmuted. Could you give us your, your name and address, please?
Um, Brooke DeRue, Tullow, Radding Avenue.
We can't, we can't really hear you. Sorry about that.
Where's the sound?
Oh, boy. Not, not.
What's the sound?
Boy, I turn up all the way.
We can hear you now.
It's good.
Okay, that's better?
Yes, if you could just give your, your address for, she needs to take down everybody's name and address that speaks, that's all.
Okay, it's Brooke DeRue at 208 Radding Avenue.
Thank you.
Go away.
208 Radding, you felt like reading.
Good, thank you very much. You can, you can give us your comment now.
Okay, um, so I'm not sure if I'm really supposed to be doing this now, but I just felt like it had to be said. Let's see, so I'm speaking here today for my children, for their freedom to be able to fully breathe in school. Anytime someone covers their mouth and knows there's going to be a limited amount of oxygen flow and breathe normally, which is a, which would be some common sense to people. When the pandemic first started, I began to do my own research without face masks. I found an interesting video of the two women from OSHA. These two women have worked for OSHA for the past 30 years. They were extremely surprised that the CDC was advising people to wear masks. Masks were normally worn by sick people and not healthy ones. Their job was to help business owners and employees have a safe environment for industrial jobs where masks were worn to make everything up for it so that the, so that the owner can't be sued and the health worker was able to get their breaks. They went on to say that there are so many people with pre-existing, pre-existing health issues that such should never be wearing masks to begin with. These two women have decided to become whistleblowers against OSHA. After 100 years of the, under 100 years of the same mandates regarding masks, they changed regulations that were, that would no need to do so. These women are coming forward to do it at their own risk to themselves, being censored, degraded, and lose their credibility for the truth to come out. Masks do not work against aerosol viruses. Viruses are so small that it goes between the layer of a mask, doesn't matter which kind. Then I have a, an article about children wearing masks by a person, Dr. Margaret. She's a consultant for neurologist, she has a PhD in pharmaceutical. Let's see, she holds a membership to American Academy of Neurology. And she holds medical licenses in Germany, United States, Switzerland, and United Kingdom, Norway. She is one of the most foremost experts in the world on the effects of oxygen deprivation under print. She, she states, "A wearing mask over a mouth and nose creates oxygen deficiency and is a intake, increased intake of carbon dioxide and causes deficiency of the brain cells." In essence, the brain is being suffocated, which causes irreversible degrading of the brain that states that particularly a problem with children whose brains are developing. Depriving the development brain of oxygen causes brain damage that cannot be reversed. Let's see, she's backed up by another person. Sixty measures. Let's see, and then it goes instead, then it goes back to OSHA. Cites OSHA Standards of Safe Oxygen Levels with that respiratory protection standards from self and health administrators. U.S. Department of Labor states, "A breathing air with O2 concentration levels 19.5% gets considered oxygen deprivation, causing psychological health and adverse effects, which can be anywhere from headaches to, and not to mention that the, the mask can harbor bacteria that is unsafe for, for a person to be wearing. So it's really not end up doing what it's supposed to be doing. It's actually harming a person more than helping them. Then I said, I have two special needs children that cannot afford to be losing any more brain cells than what they, that what they're missing from. So it's very important for me for them that they not wear masks at school. Uh, let's see. Okay, it may, it doesn't make any logical sense to have kids mask while at school while they can leave the school building and out with their friends without one.
You can go. I'm sorry, we, each comment is just five minutes. So we're, we're just going to try to keep everybody to that, but we appreciate what, that you can.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not seeing any more names in the chat, so we are going to move on to section seven, the Superintendent's Report. Dr. McDowell.
Yes, section 7.01 is the enrollment report. May of 2020, the district had an enrollment of 2234. And as of May 2021, we have an enrollment of 2212 with the corresponding enrollment reports attached to this section. 7.02 is the emergency drill report for the month of May. There are no suspensions. And 7.04 is the harassment, intimidation, and bullying report for the month of May.
Thank you. We're going to, to move on from section eight student reports and just say that we are excited for the, the young ladies graduating. And then moving on to section nine, which is our Business Administrator Board Secretary Report. And since Ms. Coleman is not here this evening, Matt Craig, who is our, the Chair of our Buildings and Grounds Committee, is going to, to read that report for.
I'll do the best I can to fill in for Beth Ann, but very poor imitation for sure. 901 is budget transfers for the month of May. It's a typo here, but May 2021. They're listed in the attached document, everything coming up. No major findings. 902, Board Chart, Board Secretary and Treasurer School Funds Report for May 2021, also presented with cash flow report as well. 903, it's the Food Service State Financial Statement for the month of May is attached. Able to look at 904, Activities Report for Student Activities for the month of May. 905 is our June 2020 Final Purchase Orders. Is that supposed to be June 2021? Or is that for until last year?
No.
I can open it up. And it looks like it's saying 2020 on here, so this is for the entire year. Yeah.
I think I just forgot to attach the current one.
Do you think it's that bill or is it supposed to be for, for the last?
Shouldn't be for the whole year, it should only be for the month.
For the month of June, okay. All right, so I think we would want to flag then to have the current one put on here. In those instances, do we not vote on that? We will approve that?
We'll have to push it off to the next meeting.
Okay, all right, so let's flag, I will, that is 905. Just want to put down there that we want to push that in my next piece. All right, so 906 is the warrants, June 2021. All listing of warrants is presented in the final document for approval. Okay, good then to move on to committee statements or be any questions on those, not that I'm in a great position to answer any of them.
Um, I'm just wondering about the, the purchase orders. If, if. Are we messing anything up by?
By not approving them?
Yeah, although I'm looking, they're all, it all says 2020, so it's not the right report. So I guess we're not, if it's not the correct report. I was just looking to see if it was simply a one date error, but it doesn't appear. It looks like, Bill, I think you're right, that it's just the wrong report altogether.
It, it is, I think that we will, we know that we're going to have the need for a special meeting. We will get it corrected in, in time for that, that special meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so then with, with all that, yes, Matt, if you could continue on.
Okay, so moving on to the Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee. We review all financial statements, purchase orders, warrants on a monthly basis. Committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers. Oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. So what I just went over was 10.2 through 10.9 with 10.8 we're going to strike out because that is the approval of the purchase orders, which we will not be approving. So that is 10.8.
Do we need a motion to like table that item?
I don't know, when we vote, do we just say on that?
When Matt calls to order, he'll just skip that number.
Okay.
You'd read like 10.01 to 10.07 and then 10.
Really? Earning this seat tonight, so appreciated. Okay, 10.10 is the capital and maintenance reserves. We are moving on the recommendation, the Superintendent, to approve the following resolution. Whereas by NJSA 6A 23-2.14 permits Board of Education to establish an deposit into a maintenance capital tuition reserve account year-end. Whereas the aforementioned statute authorizes procedures under the authority of the Commission of Education which permit Board of Education to transfer anticipated excess current revenue or unexpected appropriations into a capital reserve account during the month of June by board resolution. And whereas the Collins Board of Education wishes to deposit anticipated current year surplus into the capital reserve tuition and maintenance accounts at year-end. Whereas the Collins Board of Education has determined that up to $200,000 may be available for maintenance reserve and up to $300,000 is available for capital reserve. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Collins Board of Education that it hereby authorizes the district's School Business Administrator to make this transfer consistent with all applicable laws and regulations. That it hereby authorizes the district school business administrator to make this transfer consistent with all applicable laws and regulations. That's ten ten. Um, ten eleven is moving on the recommendation to award a contract to Harry's Plumbing and Heating Supply Company for each of the plumbing items pending a legal review. Uh, there's a summary of the bid, uh, attached of what we are going out for, for plumbing supplies. Uh, ten point twelve, uh, moving on the recommendation to approve, superintendent to approve, um, to the Department of Education. That we've been, we've been notified we're eligible for funding as part of the IDEA Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Um, upon completion and approval of the application such funds, uh, these are the following allocations that we can expect. Five hundred thirty, five hundred thirty two thousand four and thirteen dollars for the basic IDEA and then preschool level twelve thousand nine hundred and eighty five dollars. Um, it's necessary to apply to the Jersey Department of Education to obtain these funds and resolution. And that the Collins with Board of Education appoint Fred Bell as authorized LEA representative. And I think Coleman and Elizabeth Whitehouse as the contact person still apply to the State Department of Education. Under IDA consolidated application for the following allocations for coming to school district, the ones that are just right above. And note that the grant funds have been reduced by three percent. Ten point one three, uh, moving on the recommendation of the superintendent to prove the attached state mandated contract with CFS Oakland for pre-K services for the following school year. Ten point one four, moving on the recommendation to approve the revised, uh, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two shared child study team services agreement with the Oakland Board of Education. Just to accommodate for more of the services that are going to be over there. Ten point one five move on the recommendations superintendent for Audubon Public Schools provide technology services on an as needed basis to Collins with Public Schools. From July twenty twenty one through June of twenty twenty two. Um, just to make sure that we have all of our tech set, uh, ready to go, again, this was, um, the former head of technically was now over in Audubon, so this is, so that we can. Lean on him if we need anything. Also, a, uh, shared maintenance services agreement with the Audubon Board of Education on an as new basis for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. Um, which we have with some of the other neighboring towns, that's ten point one six, ten point one seven is the, um. Super move on the recommendation superintendent place students in appropriate schools for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two extended and regular school year as presented. This is the special education placements for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Ten point one eight is moving on the recommendation superintendent to authorize the business administrator to seek proposals for specialized real estate. Legal services for special projects. Essentially, the going out because our current board, um, attorney has a conflict and is representing the. Is representing who we would be potentially talking about with the purchase of a facility, this is at the explanatory stage, just to start conversations. So why we would be going out for a legal expert at this time, um, and not just using our district attorney. Ten point one nine moving on the recommendation to superintendent to authorize the business administrator seek proposals for strategic planning services. Um, also again, just to, um, get started with our district boards, uh, strategic plan. Ten point two zero, um, moving in the recommendation superintendent to prove the purchase of the twenty nineteen four cargo van. Our original price was twenty one thousand forty eight mileage of three, three thousand five nineteen from the Oakland Public School District for seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Okay, this one's a long one, do I need to read all of the public comment for this one, all right, this is a return.
The whole thing, just to.
Okay.
You can summarize it for us.
Yeah. Uh, so the net return surplus of funds held in trust by the Burlington County Insurance Pool Joint Insurance Fund, um, these would be returned to us. And we look down here, you can see what the board share of the total funds that would be returned. Ten point two two, uh, move on the recommendations superintendent avoid all outstanding checks from the student activities account as attached. Ten twenty three, um, approved shared service agreement for communication services for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two through twenty twenty three school years with Hat and Township Board of Ed. Twenty twenty fours approving use for, uh, Patrick Dorni to adopt the boys and girls basketball camp. Uh, in the high school gym from July, on July, June twenty eighth to July first. And then use of facilities for Nutriserve Food Management Company to hold a job fair on July fifteenth in the high school cafeteria. Twenty six, again, use facilities for the Red Cross to do a blood drive in the high school gym in October. And that is it, so we are seeking. Approval for ten points two to ten point seven and then ten point nine to ten point two six. Any questions, comments?
Well, hold on.
First, sorry.
We have a motion.
Motion to move to Syria.
To Syria Rivera and a second.
Second, Sarah Mello.
Now, do we have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I got a couple. Uh, ten point one eight and ten point one nine, what are we trying to accomplish with those two?
Ten point one eight, as I said, as we are starting the negotiations on facility, uh, our current board, our current board attorney represents the, uh. Represents diocese of Camden, so we, in order to start with conversations to determine if this is something we want to explore further, we need an attorney to represent the district.
At this point, do we need to hire an attorney to start the discussion? Are we not capable of doing that ourselves in-house?
We could ask them, but I, I think with an attorney, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable advising the district to, to move in a direction without having an attorney.
Oh, great, if you decide to buy something, absolutely, but.
My understanding, Bill, is that we are at the stage now, we have been discussing it with the, with the local, um. The local, I don't know what it would perish, same word. But we need to, we need to move to, um, the, the larger diocese and for that we. Would like some legal help, we would normally be using our attorney for it and we can't because our attorney is conflicted. So to, to begin any sort of serious discussions about it, we would need representation, just like they will have representation.
Okay, at this point, though, it doesn't seem that we're in a serious discussion phase unless I've missed something.
No, I don't know if you want to help me out here, but.
Yes, there has been.
We need more information, we do need to.
As a, as a, as a district, we have been engaged in a series of ongoing discussions with several entities related to our infrastructure concerns. Specifically at the elementary level, uh, so we've had multiple meetings, we have had, uh, uh, site visits. Which have included our members of our operation team, members of our ad hoc facilities board committee, uh, and members of our, um. Uh, a business and finance, uh, team. And we've reached a stage where if we are going to continue to engage in, in discussion and problem solving around infrastructure. We will, we will need, uh, legal, uh, counsel in order to understand, um, all of the variables and context that we have to operate as a school system. So we, we've, we've, we've reached that point, um, but for the last two months, we have been engaged in due diligence. Uh, and we've kind of reached, uh, our capacity at this point.
Sounds like we've made a decision to buy something.
We're currently exploring several options.
Okay, that wasn't a no.
I, I mean, it's, we don't know how much.
I think it's important to say that what we're trying, what we're trying to do is make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row before we more publicly, um, engage. With, with what's going on here, and in order to do that, we need to, to hire a, a real estate attorney to help us out with that. So that we make sure that what we're doing makes sense.
Okay, I hear what you're saying, personally, I don't agree, but okay, I hear what you're saying. How about the, uh, second one, the strategic planning services, are we not capable of doing that in-house?
We've shared this several times, Bill, um, here's the, here's the, the bottom line, the bottom line is, is that strategic planning is a, a pretty comprehensive. Um, community engagement endeavor. And generally, what happens is that if you try to do it in-house. Um, you can sometimes stifle the level of honesty and the level of innovation and thinking. Um, because individuals will sometimes believe that there is a prepackaged plan already in the works. So by having a facilitator that has tools and resources. Uh, we can devote the majority of our time actually engaging our community with all of the members. Both at the board level and at the district administration level, being participatory opposed to, uh, facilitating the process. So we want authentic dialogue, we want individuals to come forward, we want people to be fully participatory. And in order to do that, we believe that an entity who specializes in facilitating the strategic planning process would do a better job than if we tried to do it ourselves.
Okay, just curious, because last time we did this, we did do it in-house, does that strategic planning initiative, uh, have any bearing on the one before that with the real estate attorney?
Does it have any bearing, there, they would be two, two separate issues?
I think we're gonna need a real estate attorney because of the results of the, uh, strategic planning initiative?
No, they're, they're gonna be two, two separate issues, so the infrastructure has been a long-term challenge for the district. Strategic planning helps us to set the, um, the academic agenda, uh, and, and long-term planning for the district.
Okay, great, well, that will include, do I assume a, a population survey? Anticipated population survey, demographic survey?
The district had a pop, had a demographic survey completed in two thousand nineteen, what we have, um, discussed. Is to just to go back and to, to revisit the demographic, uh, information that was presented. Just to, um, to make sure that it is still, uh, accurate and reflects the current status of the district. But one was conducted and completed in two thousand nineteen.
Correct, that was two years ago. Doesn't seem necessary that we do another study to, uh, verify the, the results from two years ago. Five years ago, maybe it's, uh, maybe it's, uh, appropriate, but I don't know that two years is the appropriate figure.
I just want to clarify, because I feel like this came up once before, that what we're voting on here this evening is, um. An RFP to go out for strategic planning services, not for a demographic study, so that's, that's not what is on the agenda.
I fully understand that.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from board members?
I have a comment, I just want to state, um, just for clarity purposes that these are conversations we have had and I. Want to express appreciation for kind of reiterating and re-explaining these things because they are pretty complex. Um, I just don't want the impression that we did not have an opportunity to discuss this before it being up for vote today.
What, yeah, move down to ten twenty three, what is ten twenty three? Oh, okay, the shared service agreement with Hat and Township, or with, with a whole bunch of, uh, districts. Just a, a question. And, and I, again, it's going to come down to money in my particular case. We're going to get thirty six days of this person's time, which is twenty percent of a, a school year. And that's going to cost us, uh, twenty thousand dollars, uh, to do that. That means that person, including benefits, would be making a hundred thousand dollars a year, is that correct?
Um, I mean, that, that's a accurate, I mean, that would be a, a good assumption.
Okay, would it, would it be less expensive for Collinswood to hire their own person?
No, how, so the, the reason for the shared service agreement with other districts, um, that have like challenges and similar size. Is we want to make sure that we have a highly competent individual based on the sophistication of information and the level of engagement. With reopening that's going to be an essential for the next, at least for the next two years. So we know that we need someone who has been engaged in this work, already knows what they're doing, already understands. All the communication channels needed to engage each of our communities, how to package the information and, and so forth. But we didn't need a full-time individual. Now, naturally, districts, if districts choose to, to acquire. A full-time or a part-time individual, they were encouraged to do so. Uh, but the thinking behind this was for all of us who have similar circumstances was to share. Uh, an individual that we know could do the job and has been doing similar work in this region for a considerable period of time. And does not need transition, um, it makes it nice and clean, and from a district perspective. Um, it's, there, there is a significant cost savings for us to do this on our own, we would probably be looking at double if not triple the cost.
Okay, is this someone Hat and Township has on staff already?
No, this is someone who has worked in Camden County doing similar work, um, but not someone who is on staff for Hat and Township, no.
Okay. Thank you.
The, before we move, I just want to, am I sharing, what I'm sharing on the screen is the appropriate one right now, there's some question, I just want to make sure nothing up here is. Not for the public view, I logged out of board docs and this should be public, but.
We should only be seeing the public content.
Administrative content should not be coming up?
No, so you need to log out and just log in as.
So, Matt, are you using, uh, Google Chrome?
Yeah, so just do it on, um.
Do a new incognito window.
Okay. Unclear how to actually now find us when I'm in board docs. Apologies.
I'm not sure, should I, should I try to have all of us vote, I don't want to mess Matt up while he's trying to, to share at the same time. Clearly the end of the school year.
Matt, do you need the link to the, to the public board docs?
If you could send me that, that would be great.
Yep. I sent it to you via the Zoom.
All right. Now I'll come back to share. Okay.
Now we're good.
Okay.
All right, so now, let's get to.
Not to miss any more meetings.
A roll call, please.
Uh, Craig, Clinton Connor?
Uh, yes, except for ten dash thirteen, which I abstained.
Roger Chu?
Yes.
Matthew Craig?
Yes.
Fiona Henry? Fiona Henry?
Yes.
Sarah Mello?
Yes.
Syria Rivera?
Yes.
Mary Severino?
Yes.
Christine, Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Bill Stotts?
Yes, except that is ten eighteen, ten nineteen, ten twenty three, where I vote no.
Eighteen, nineteen and twenty three, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Heidi Marie Wood?
Yes, except for ten thirteen and ten fourteen where I abstain.
Reagan Caden?
Moving on to section eleven, the curriculum committee, Ms. Severino.
So this will be a short one. The curriculum committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs as well as field trips, home instruction. Co-curricular programs and the school calendar. So for. Eleven point oh two, oh three and oh four, there are no field trips. Eleven point oh five is approval for a student placed on out of district home instruction. And that's it. So you need approval of items eleven point oh two to eleven point oh five.
So would Sarah Mello?
Sarah gave the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Heidi Marie Wood was the second. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Roll call.
Clinton Connor?
Yes.
Roger Chu?
Yes.
Matthew Craig?
Yes.
Fiona Henry?
She said yes, her volumes.
Sarah Mello?
Yes.
Syria Rivera?
Yes.
Mary Severino?
Yes.
Christine, Sherrod and Celia?
Yes.
Bill Stotts?
Yes. Item ten point oh, or I'm sorry, eleven point oh two where I abstain.
Heidi Marie Wood?
Yes, I'm supposed to abstain at the asterix, but there's nothing really there, so.
And Reagan Caden?
Yes. Moving on to section twelve, the personnel committee, Ms. Sherrod and Celia, will you present, please?
This will not be as short as the previous report, so please bear with me. The personnel committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment. And considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. At section twelve point oh two and twelve point oh three, we have two resignations. And twelve point oh four, Marty Casey, one of our school nurses is retiring after eighteen years, so I'd like to thank her. Twelve point oh five through twelve point oh nine are leaves of absences. Twelve ten is the next few are hirings. Twelve ten is a new school psychologist. Elementary long-term substitute at twelve eleven and twelve twelve. Twelve point thirteen is a new secondary long-term substitute. Twelve point fourteen is a revised nurse contract. Twelve point fifteen is the appointing of after-school mental health support staff. Twelve point sixteen is the appointing of athletic person, event personnel for the next school year. Twelve point seventeen extended title one after-school tutoring employees. Twelve point eighteen is the twelve, the next year student teacher, teacher and practicum placements for, from Rowan University. They're going to be at. This young lady is going to be at Tatum. Twelve nineteen administrative transfers within the district. Twelve point twenty is the administrative. Oops, I lost everybody here. Title changes and job assignments for the new year as part of, of Dr. McDowell's reorganization, reorganization or reentry. Entry plan. Twelve twenty-one, I'm sorry, twelve points twenty-one are the appointments of lunchtime and playground assistance within the district. Twelve twenty-two, teacher, again, another student teacher practicum placement. Also from, but this person is from Rutgers Camden. At twelve twenty-three, we have some high school non-athletic EDP stipends. For the high school musical choreographer and school play for next year. Twelve twenty-four is middle school non-athletic stipends for sound and stage. Twelve twenty-five are athletic coaches' appointments for girl soccer for next year. Twelve twenty-six are for band volunteers. I'm sorry, twelve twenty-six, twelve twenty-seven, after-school security staff appointing three individuals. At an hourly rate. Oh, wow. Let's see. Where did I leave off here?
There's twelve twenty-eight.
I'm sorry, my, uh, my mouse went a little crazy here. All right, there we go. Twelve, twelve twenty-eight is the two thousand twenty-one summer program staff appointments. Twelve twenty-nine, summer online science course. Approval for Ms. Whitaker. Twelve thirty is the two thousand twenty-one summer academy staff. Twelve thirty-one, the nurse for the summer academy staff. She is appointing as summer, someone for the summer. Twelve twenty-one are the students who will be working in the summer. Twelve thirty-three, summer ELL staff. And revisions to the summer IEP staff at twelve thirty-four through twelve thirty-six. Revisions to the summer middle school guidance counselors is found at twelve thirty-seven. Twelve thirty-eight is the appointment for the. Child studies team staff for the summer. Twelve thirty-nine, summer SEL tiers two and three counseling. And that's also at pay, at. Item twelve point four zero. Twelve point four one and twelve point four two are the two thousand twenty-one summer SEL elementary curriculum and middle school curriculum respectively. And the high school comes up next to twelve point forty-three for summer SEL. Twelve point forty-four are. Is allowing nurses to do high summer sports physicals. Twelve point forty-five. The appointment of buildings and grounds staff for the summer. Twelve point forty-six, there are. Is the appointment of substitute and tutors for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. There's a whole list. Rather lengthy list of individuals. Twelve point forty-seven. Travel expense form, but I don't see one here, so I'm not sure if we have one. Does anyone know, Dr. McDowell? I don't see any, I didn't see. Okay, there's not.
No travel.
All right. Twelve twenty-one, I'm sorry, twelve point forty-eight is the twenty twenty-one. Summer hiring to allow retention of employment contracts. During the summer while, for approval after we return. Discussion items are next. And that's it for me. I don't know if Dr. McDowell has things he wants to bring up right now? Or we're going right on to the approvals?
First, we have to, I have to do a motion.
Okay.
So let's do a, a motion to approve items twelve point oh one to twelve point four eight.
So move Roger Chu.
And a second.
Second.
I think wouldn't beat you by a second there.
Okay.
Comments or questions from board members? Roll call, please.
Clinton Connor?
Yes.
Roger Chu?
Yes.
Matthew Craig?
Yes.
Fiona Henry?
Yes.
Sarah Mello?
Yes.
Syria Rivera?
Yes.
Mary Severino?
Yes.
Christine, Sherrod and Celia?
Yes.
Bill Stotts?
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk and items nineteen, or eighteen and nineteen. No, let me spread that again. All those marked with the double asterisk and numbers nineteen and twenty where I abstain.
Okay, Heidi Marie Wood?
Yes, except for the items marked with a single or a double asterisk. And I think I need to abstain from twenty. Bill, do I need to abstain from nineteen too or no?
Uh. I don't, I'm not sure now. Run back, tell me what you are.
Yeah, twenty, twenty, I know I saw elementary.
Nineteen is elementary. So yeah.
Okay, both nineteen and twenty.
Reagan Caden?
Yes, I forgot I hadn't voted. Um, okay, moving on to section thirteen, policy, well, actually, policy miscellaneous, there is nothing at the moment, so we are moving right along. Because there are no hip reports from last month to section fourteen, which is our second opportunity for public comment. If you wish to make a statement, please type your name and address into the chat. And when your name is called, unmute yourself and. Keep your, please keep your comments to five minutes or less. The purpose for this public comment section is, is for any general comments, not just the ones listed on the agenda. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. And that we will be actively listening and taking notes. And there will be other opportunities to engage in dialogue later on in the summer. So if you have something that you, if you have a comment you would like to make, please put your name in the chat and that might last. Um, Dan Smith?
Thank you. I just have a quick question about the summer camp at Tatum right now. I have two children there. And the playground itself at Tatum has been closed. And I was just checking to see if there was a. A big, good luck to know what the reason is and if there's anything we can do to help fix that.
Mr. Smith, I would say if you could step him down, maybe you can help me with this, but where should he direct that, that question?
So Keith, could you share where we are in terms of, I, I know that there were. There were plans in order to make sure that we appropriately cleaned. The playground areas that had been underutilized throughout the pandemic. Keith, could you kind of give us an update on, on where we are with that process?
Yes, the playgrounds have been closed the entirety of the school year. We've been doing our weekly safety checks for the equipment to make sure we don't have any. Any issues with corrosion or rust or fasteners that need to be addressed. However, we have not replenished the fall zone material under the equipment since the pandemic started. So it is on our list. We actually had the summer buildings and grounds crew over there today, turning the mulch over. And we have one dump truck load of falls over material spread. And then the second load is scheduled to get picked up tomorrow. And we are starting at Tatum because of the summer camp. And we are going to progress around to the remaining elementary schools and hopefully have them all up and running. And caution tape down and the fall zone material replenished to safety standards by the end of this week.
Thank you.
Also had a similar question from my kids as to why the playground was not open at camp today. So glad we got that one, so.
I don't have anything else to thank.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. And I would say if, if there are any further questions about that, Mr. Higgins Mosson would be the, the contact person. And his email, I believe, is on the website.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other names listed. So at this point, I'm going to say that, or ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening.
Can I ask a real quick question?
Oh, sure.
Have you guys discussed coming back in person?
We had kind of made the assumption, we haven't formally discussed it, but we kind of made the assumption that we would be. As school is returning to in-person, we would be doing the same for, for our end of August meeting. Dr. McDowell, is that about right?
Yes.
And then obviously the, the community forums will also be in-person at the schools in August. But our, our next official board meeting, which is, now I'm forgetting the date, I want to say August thirtieth. Would be an in-person board.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, with that, just last reminder before I adjourn to, for any. Anyone that isn't a board member on the call, or I guess anyone that is with kids, to, to be on the lookout for emails coming from the district mid-July with more information about. When, to, when to look out for the school reopening plan and the, the forums that would be taking place. So with all of that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Okay.
That's Celia and a second.
Here we go.
Second is Syria Rivera. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a great summer, everyone. And I know we will be meeting for, for both. Another special board meeting at some point to, to do a quick approval and for other school reopening reasons. So I know we'll see each other, but still. Everyone have a, have a lovely summer. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Take care.